City Council meeting. Please call and roll to confirm a quorum.
Councilmember Abdellgawad?
Here.
Councilmember Barber?
Present.
Councilmember Burke?
Present.
Councilmember Holman?
Present.
Councilmember Hubach?
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Present.
Councilmember Morehead?
Present.
Councilmember Stevens?
Present.
Mayor Kirkoff?
Present. We do have a quorum. If everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we do have a proclamation this evening.
A proclamation. Whereas in 2015, an estimated forty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and forty thousand five hundred and sixty will die from the disease, with approximately eight hundred and sixty of those deaths in Missouri. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and projected to become the second by 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate and a single digits at just seven percent. And whereas when the symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally at the late stage, and seventy-three percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while ninety-three percent of pancreatic cancers die within the first five years. And whereas there will be an estimated three hundred and sixty-seven thousand new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed globally in 2015. Now therefore I, Peter Kirkoff, Mayor of the city of Raymore, Missouri, to hereby proclaim the thirteenth day of November 2015 as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the city of Raymore, Missouri, to emphasize the awareness of pancreatic and the research to early detection, causes, and effective treatment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could just challenge all of you. Normally, it's been the whole month of November, but corporate nationwide has now declared Friday, November thirteenth, as purple. Everybody wear purple. Remember those. We're fortunate right now. Mark is a three-year survivor, has been totally released from all of his doctors, but there are two Raymore residents here right now that are battling it their third time, and they were diagnosed also in 2012. So just keep everyone in prayer and wear purple on Friday. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Move on to staff reports. Mr. Fearborn?
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make the staff report for community development.
Thank you, sir. A few items tonight. The couple upcoming meetings are Board of Adjustment. We'll have a meeting tomorrow evening. They have one application for a variance for a resident that lives in Ward Park Place. They're wanting to add on to the back of their home. They have a kind of an irregular-shaped lot, and so they are requesting a variance to allow that addition to be built. Then on November seventeenth, a week from tomorrow, our Planning Commission has a couple items on their agenda. First, they'll hold a public hearing on a UDC amendment regarding a sidewalk on undeveloped quarter lots. I know council may recall when we had our public hearings in September. There was some question regarding the code and its applicability to quarter lots, and how we decide if sidewalks required on undeveloped quarter lot or not. So we're proposing an amendment to the UDC to clarify that code language. They're also going to discuss a draft of a pedestrian plan that staff's preparing. Pedestrian plan would be an element of our growth management plan and be a component of that plan. The purpose in doing this document, it helps us achieve one of the requirements for the Walk Friendly Community Initiative that we're involved in, and having a pedestrian plan is an important part of that. So we bring in a draft for the Planning Commission to consider on the seventeenth. And then on their December first meeting, hopefully we'll consider adoption of that pedestrian plan. Then we're also going to have a public hearing to reclassify the zoning of the four lots that the city recently purchased, that municipal complex here. It does have to have city zoning designation on the properties, you know, to proceed with development of those properties. I will note that the city center overlay district standards will still apply to the lots. So the base zoning will be a city zoning designation, but all the design standards that apply to the municipal complex lots will apply to our lots. That designation will not change. Regarding the status of a few construction projects, Taco Bell continues to progress very well. They still anticipate finishing that store by the end of the month, you know, weather permitting. A lot of activity in Willowwind, the Fearless Dance Studio, Big Daddy Donuts, and then a Right-It-Home office. All working on tenant finishes in Willowwind. Then a retail outlet's looking at the Raymore Galleria, the UMB Center there, that strip center there. So they're looking at finishing one of the tenant spaces. Then Foxwood Springs continues their renovations in their main area. I think they're currently working on the cafeteria area. And just a final note, again, very active construction season. Currently, on single-family home development, we have a hundred and fifty single-family homes currently under construction. That's really, really high. That's very, very active, much higher than we've had for many years. Now, a few of those are going to be finished spec homes that are a way, you know, somebody to purchase, but still, I think you'll see a lot of activity going on in our different subdivisions. So it's very good for the city to see that kind of new home construction. So I'm very excited about that. That will conclude staff report.
Questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Catterett. I would ask Mr. Mustine to make a report for Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Submitted a written report and just a few highlights of that report for this evening. We did close out the farmer's market for the year in October. Had a great year. Most of our vendors are fully aware at this point that the depot is up and will be ready to go for next spring. So we'll have a full layout of how that's going to function for the vendors throughout the winter months. Our Harvest Night event was October twenty-third. Despite the playoffs, we had a great, great evening. We did play the game live so that the folks could, the dads sitting around, and could sit there and watch while the kids did the spook trail. But it was a good night. Had good weather and good attendance. Staff has been preparing for the dedication coming up, the Veterans Day celebration. So we invite everybody to come out to that tomorrow night. And also something that's exciting for our department, one of the things we've been working on with the Communications Department is our new e-newsletters that we have coming out specifically on a monthly basis, and then we'll send out more specific ones directed towards sports or instructional programs as they come up. So if you haven't seen that, I encourage you to go to our website and sign up for those. They're really nice. Couple of the projects wrapping up or on task here is the Hawkeridge Trail. We did receive notification, and we did not receive the grant funding that we had applied for. We have requested the scorecards so that we could look and see what we've done and what needs to be improved on for the next go-around. So the Engineering Department, myself, and the bidder, the company who won the bid, will be getting together and working towards a construction plan for the trail. The outdoor resurfacing project at Memorial Park and Recreation Park is complete. It is done, and it's being used as we speak. Lights were on when I drove by. So that concludes my report, and I can answer any questions.
Questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the really thorough report, but if you would give everybody, maybe who's watching, who didn't get invitations like we did to the Veterans Day ceremony tomorrow, just the details in case anyone listening, watching wants to attend.
The Veterans Day ceremony tomorrow is kind of twofold. It's a dedication of the memorial flag pole by one of our local residents, and then it's also a dedication of the building that you guys have funded. And it's a combined event on our normal Veterans Day ceremony. So it will be beginning at 5:30 tomorrow night at the Hannah Station, TB Hannah Station Park. And we have been working diligently on making sure the lights are up and the facility, the landscaping is all, the native plants that we've been doing. So it looks fantastic. Lights are on right now, and so it looks really good. So we invite everybody to come out tomorrow. Should be a short ceremony, but it'll be a nice ceremony as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mustine, and we're very pleased that it won't be a candlelight ceremony. We've been, Mike's been over there about six out of the eight hours of the last five days, just making sure that all the electrical is in. I think you'll be very impressed with both the building and how it makes the area look. It's a really neat feel. We were walking around it tonight, and several of the neighbors were actually up there. One couple with their dog. The Quaddys were up there. Apparently, they've been checking on it every night for us, and Daryl's been doing his particular progress updates to me each morning on the punch list as it goes. But it is just a really neat area to be offering our people. I would ask that Ms. Warner make a report from the City Clerk's Office.
Thank you, sir. Just a note to council that there is a minor correction to the original agenda and packet that was distributed, and that is to item A of Unfinished Business, the revisions to the HR policy. The correction is, the reference was to Bill thirty thirteen. The correct bill number is thirty-one thirteen. The second item I have for you is the announcement of the joint meeting hosted by the Raymore Pacular School District on November the eighteenth. Those RSVPs are due this Friday to the City Clerk's Office, which is November thirteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. I would ask that Chief Zimmerman make a report from the Police Department and Emergency Management.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. You probably noticed in the weekly report that was issued today that there were a number of thefts from vehicles throughout the community during this last reporting period. And so we felt like it would be a good opportunity to maybe reach out to the community via this meeting and let folks, give them some reminders and let folks know some tips that they might consider in securing their vehicles and hopefully keeping those types of thefts from happening. A lot of these are going to seem like absolute common sense information, but we always like to remind folks to lock their doors and windows. That includes keeping sunroofs closed, that sort of thing. Remove all valuables from your car. You'd be surprised the number of folks who leave very high-value items such as GPS laptops, which are high-value targets, and you leave those exposed in your vehicles. You know, obviously, you know, the thief is looking for the easy target. So if you harden that target and make it more difficult, obviously, they may move on to another type of vehicle. That includes charging cords. You leave those types of things exposed. That's going to create interest for that person who's looking to break into a vehicle. Keep your car neat inside. I know that that's very difficult for my young daughters, but, you know, keeping your car neat inside, I can't tell you the number of times that my young daughter would tell me that the purse was empty, and so, you know, that's not going to be a target for somebody looking to steal something. The empty purse or the shopping bag is not something that the person looking to break in knows it's empty, so, you know, you need to keep that car clean. Even changing your console sometimes is a target for folks looking to break in. If you have an SUV, consider some type of cover in the cargo area. Leaving packages and things like that exposed in the cargo area obviously is an easy target. Secure those items in your trunk before you park. If, you know, someone's watching you, if you're parking in an area that you get out of your vehicle, you put those packages in your trunk. Obviously, if somebody's observing that activity, that makes you an easier target. Parking areas of high visibility, lots of lights, other cars around, things like that. And if that's at your residence, obviously, turn on exterior lights. If you have motion-sensitive lights, obviously, that's much more beneficial. Consider theft deterrent systems. You know, obviously, any type of alarm system on a vehicle, any type of steering wheel lock or column collars will make the vehicle more difficult to steal, because we actually had, in one of those neighborhoods, a stolen auto as well as several vehicle break-ins. Layer your defenses. Mark your belongings. If you can have those inscribed, you can have decals, etching, even tracking devices on those items that you have in your vehicle. But again, as a last resort, because taking those items out of the vehicle is always going to be the best bet. And then don't hide spare keys. You'd be surprised the number of folks who will, in plain view, leave keys, you know, secured someplace, you know, out and around their residence, and that's just, or somewhere on the vehicle in a magnetized attachment. And that's just never, never a good idea. So with that, like I said, we just want to remind folks, please, please, secure your vehicles and make that a more difficult target for those thieves. Yes, sir?
Thank you for the update and the helpful tips. The one thing that I'll add is that I've personally experienced. An unlocked car like mine has a garage door opener in it, which is a direct key to my house, being that I have an indoor garage door into my house. From my garage, one thing, one preventative thing that I personally had done, this is just for information for other people, is that I purchased a lock for that door because my house was not built with that lock. So be cognizant, or try to remember that most people have garage door openers, and an unlocked car is an unlocked house right there in that avenue. And thieves, all they need is an opportunity, and they are opportunists.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And then Mr. Fearborn asked me to also give you all an update. You may have heard some of the information that we've posted on Facebook and some other places about the storm that's going to be coming on Wednesday. Not the type of storm we normally see this time of year, but we've received an update from the National Weather Service, and we're going to be participating tomorrow in a webinar with those folks as well. But Raymore's in the enhanced risk segment for that storm on Wednesday, which means that's a good chance that we're going to see some severe weather as it rolls through on Wednesday. The timing of the storm as of right now, beginning around ten AM and lasting through about three PM, and clearly, obviously, that, you know, timeframe could change, but this is primarily going to be high winds and hail. It's going to be extremely windy on Wednesday regardless of the storm, but we wanted to make sure that we informed everyone. Wednesday, obviously, is a holiday, so hopefully, you know, lots of folks will be staying home. But we wanted to make sure that because there are events outside, Veterans Day events, that we let folks know, who may be watching the meeting tonight, what's going to be going on. The storms are going to move through pretty rapidly from southwest to northeast, and there's a slight chance of tornadoes associated with those storms as well, which, as I said, you don't ordinarily see this time of year. Ryan, and I know Mike is here, Mike Eke is here, have been in communication, and they're going to be posting changes as those become available to us through this webinar tomorrow and all as well. But we just wanted to take this opportunity to kind of let folks know that we're on top of it, and we're going to be monitoring and letting people know as we get more information. Anybody have any questions?
Questions?
Just a comment, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but this was very informative. I'd like to see you do this more frequently. It's pretty good stuff.
That's up to my boss, sir.
Yes, sir.
He told me not to be long-winded, but it's very difficult for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Just to let the council know, as we do each meeting regarding the upcoming work session on November sixteenth, two items on the agenda currently, excuse me. The first meeting of the council with the architectural engineering firm, Draw Architecture, so that the council can kind of get to know those folks and give them some input on the new annex. And it'll be, they'll have some, you know, preliminary sketches, no plans, no anything like that, but they're going to want to be getting feedback from the council on what you see for those spaces. So that's the point of this very first meeting. The second item that will be on the agenda, of course, is immediately after Draw Architecture, when you get some ideas about what you may or may want, may want to see in the new annex area, will be the follow-up on our last work session meeting relative to the bond issue. Staff has been working very hard to get questions answered that the council had for those. I was hoping to be able to get at least some preliminary information relative to the yellow highlighted items that you all may remember were kind of what we dragged it down to. I will be able to give you a simplified spreadsheet of that, and I will be able to give you the outline that Councilmember Abdellgawad had asked for relative to Hawkeridge Park, what's been done. Some of the stuff from Draw Architecture will probably have to wait. With the council's indulgence, I would like to do two mailings on that, though, to get you this information as quickly as possible. I'll send the spreadsheet and the Hawkeridge Park items, and then with the agenda, normal agenda mailing on Thursday. If Draw has anything that they have sent us relative to some preliminary snapshots or what y'all may want to talk about, we'll send that out with the regular agenda, if the council's okay with that. Fantastic. Thank you all very much. That concludes staff reports.
Thank you. Moving on, Consent Agenda. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda to include item A, City Council Minutes for October twenty-six, 2015.
There is a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to Unfinished Business. We have the second reading of Bill three, one, three, one, three thirteen, thirty-one thirteen. There we go.
The second reading of Bill thirty-one thirteen by title only. In ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending section three zero seven point zero four of the city's human resources policy.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one thirteen regarding the Human Resources Policy Section three zero seven point zero four regarding performance evaluation.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill thirty-one thirteen. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. As I stated before, my opposition to this is strictly philosophical. I realize I'm going to be on the landslide losing side of this, but I just believe that we should be reminded that our job as city council members is overarching policy. I believe that one word change in a policy that really makes no difference is getting way too far into the weeds of operations. Therefore, I'll be voting against it, and I'll be losing. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Seven in favor, one in opposition. The motion carries. May we have the second reading of Bill thirty-one fifteen by title only, please?
The second reading of Bill thirty-one fifteen by title only. In ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving an agreement between Mark Solid Waste Management District and the city of Raymore, Missouri, relating to regional household hazardous waste program.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one fifteen regarding household hazardous waste agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill thirty-one fifteen. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. May we have the second reading of Bill thirty-one sixteen by title only, please?
The second reading of Bill thirty-one sixteen by title only. In ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving an agreement between the University of Kansas Public Management Center and the city of Raymore, Missouri, to provide facilitation and coordination services to conduct the 2016 strategic plan.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one sixteen, the Strategic Planning Facilitator Award of Contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill thirty-one sixteen. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. May we have the second reading of Bill thirty-one fourteen by title only, please?
The second reading of Bill thirty-one fourteen by title only. In ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending section seven zero five of the Raymore City Code, Article three, Lead Ban Policy, Section seven zero five point two nine zero definitions.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one fourteen, amending Lead Ban Policy Definitions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill thirty-one fourteen. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to New Business. May we have the first reading of Bill thirty-one seventeen by title only?
The first reading of Bill thirty-one seventeen by title only. In ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending chapter one zero five, Section one zero five point zero six zero, Declaration of Candidacy Form of the Raymore City Code.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Ms. Warner.
Thank you. And first, an announcement that in effort to avoid repetition, this staff report will serve for Bills thirty-one seventeen, thirty-one eighteen, and thirty-one nineteen. The Ninety-Eight General Assembly approved Senate Bill one zero four, which enacted provisions that affect changes in qualifications and filing requirements for candidates for elected offices. Bill thirty-one seventeen proposes an amendment to the City Code, Section one zero five point zero six zero, the Declaration of Candidacy Form. Bill thirty-one eighteen proposes an amendment to the City Code, Section one ten point zero one zero, Qualifications of Mayor. Bill thirty-one nineteen proposes an amendment to City Code, Section one ten point one two zero, Qualifications of Mayor, of council member, excuse me. These proposed code amendments are administrative changes which mirror state statute to align city code. The city attorney and I would be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions for council? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one seventeen, amending City Code, Section one oh five point zero six zero, regarding a Declaration of Candidacy Form.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill thirty-one seventeen. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. May we have the first reading of Bill thirty-one eighteen by title only?
The first reading of Bill thirty-one eighteen by title only. In ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending chapter one ten, Section one ten point zero one zero, Qualifications of Mayor of the Raymore City Code.
And we've already had the staff reports, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one eighteen, amending City Code, Section one one zero point zero one zero, for qualifications of mayor.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve Bill thirty-one eighteen. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Here we have the first reading of Bill thirty-one nineteen by title only.
The first reading of Bill thirty-one nineteen by title only. In ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending chapter one ten, Section one ten point one two zero, Qualification of Council Members of the Raymore City Code.
Again, we've already had the staff reports, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one nineteen, amending City Code, Section one one zero point one two zero, Qualifications of Council Member.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve Bill thirty-one nineteen. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That takes care of New Business. I'll move on to Public Comments. Anybody like to make a comment? Please identify yourself directly and keep your comments for a maximum of five minutes. If you know one, I'll close the public comment and move on to Mayor or Council Communication. Tonight, we'll start with Councilmember Morehead.
I, first of all, have to apologize. I got something in my eye about two motions ago, so I'm not crying because of how fast we're getting through tonight. But I do want to thank Ms. Hurst and, you know, those who showed up in recognition of pancreatic cancer awareness. So a very important issue that we should all respect and consider. And I will speak that I'm really excited, actually, for tomorrow night. My father was, moved my family here in nineteen seventy-three. He was stationed at Richard Scobear. He's Lieutenant Colonel in the Air Force, and he retired here and kept his family here. And as I was asking him whether he was going to show up last night, he showed me he received a plaque from the Smithsonian where he was recognized as a famous fighter pilot, actually, in the Smithsonian. And so my father will be there tomorrow night, and he was also a Raymore City Councilman as well. And so tomorrow night will be a wonderful recognition of all his service. So it's very personal to me as well. So I look forward to tomorrow night, and I hope all of you will attend as well.
Councilmember Kellogg?
No comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Hubach?
No comment.
Councilmember Barber?
No comment.
Councilmember Abdellgawad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just echo what Councilmember Morehead said about Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, and one little part he left out, just don't forget to wear purple on Friday. And invite you all to come to the Veterans Day Ceremony tomorrow night at the, what used to be called the Farmer's Market Park. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you, sir. I, too, would like to express my appreciation for the Hurst of being here tonight and reminding everyone about pancreatic cancer. They were here last year at this time, provided us with purple ribbons. It's obviously very important to them as it should be to the rest of us. It's certainly a challenge to our health, and it's something that we have to be aware of. Second thing, I always like to recognize the students in the audience. We have a few tonight. If you're here, I'm assuming for a class project, and that's not just because you didn't have anything to do tonight. You're going to get a bonus, and you're going to get a double bonus tonight. One, you're going to One, you're going to get out early. Sometimes, these things go two or three hours. You're going to get out in, well, less than an hour unless I keep going. The second bonus is, I'm going to give you a little Cliff's Notes version, now, let's see, I should see pencils picking up at any point, of what we just did. And it seemed relatively boring and it went fast in terms of how we do this, about 30 minutes. But, we, I've said this before, I believe that the city is on a precipice of a new dawn. And any of you who remember when 58 Highway went through here and it was too lame, then you've seen the progress of the city. We are about to see a new rebirth of the city as it's coming forward now. We've tried to do our best to do that and I think you're going to see a huge change in the next 365 days in the city. And it's going to start tomorrow with the Veterans Day celebration. I'm going to dovetail into that. But, you'll notice a number of things that we approved tonight and all we had to do was a simple part, just vote yes or no up here. But, we approved a change in the human resources policy as to make things better for our employees here as far as their pay and some other things. That was all due to the hard work of staff. Thank you very much. You did a great job on that. The hazardous, household hazardous waste agreement, something that the city, it's an amenity. It's not something you probably think about, but if you're like me and you had to replace a thermostat recently and you found out that there's actually mercury in those, you can't just throw those in the trash. So, that's an amenity the city provides for our citizens. We have to agree, we have to approve that every year so that your folks can get rid of those kinds of things like paint, stuff like that. We approved the second reading of our strategic facilitator for our upcoming strategic planning, probably one of the most important steps this city has ever undertaken as far as future growth and what things happen within our city. Am I going too fast? I don't, I see a few pencils going, so I'm going to finish up here. The amending lead ban policy definitions and the Declaration of Candidacy Form, qualifications of mayor and qualifications of council member were just things that we did that your state legislators said we had to do, basically. And we're just keeping our house in order, making sure our definitions match, state definitions. We have the entire staff that does that and then Joe Willert, our city attorney, who oversees that and makes sure that we do it right. So, if I didn't give you enough there to get at least a B-plus on that assignment, you can come back after Mr. Morehead, I promise. The last thing I'm going to leave you with is, you've already heard, everybody heard talk about the Veterans Day celebration tomorrow and very proud of that. I have talked about that for the past 10 years. Jim Catterett is tired of hearing me talk about that because I brought it up for every year for 10 years dating back to my first time on planning and zoning. Again, tomorrow, there's that celebration, which is very important. We should always recognize the service of those who gave some and those who gave all for our country. But, you're also going to see the brand-new depot that is going to be like the birth of a child for Mr. Fearborn. He's proudly going around showing pictures already of how it looks. It's lit up. He's spoken about it. And it is, it's a beautiful piece in a historic part of our city and it's just the beginning. So, I would love to have you all out tomorrow to see that. If nothing else, just, if nothing else, just come out and take a look at what your city's done. And we've done it a lot with the people that you see in front of you here. A lot of that was staff-led projects. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Stevens?
No comment.
Councilmember Burke?
No comment this evening. Thank you.
And I'll just echo what everybody else has said. Come on out to the TB Hannah Park tomorrow, Veterans Day celebration. And we don't have a reason to go in executive session tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Jeannie?